Good evening. This is the Town of Eastchester Planning Board meeting of Thursday, June 27, 2024. If everyone will rise for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Mr. Jim Bonanno is here, Mr. Phil Nemisak.
Present.
Lauren Goodrich.
Present.
Joseph Rabina.
Present.
Michael Fortuno.
Present.
Might as well just get the minutes out of the way. I guess we all can vote on this. Subject to the couple of comments Mr. Nemisak had, I make a motion to approve the minutes of May 23, 2024.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Sorry for the delay. We have a bunch of stuff on the agenda, so I'm just going to quickly roll over it, run over it, so that you know what we're doing and you're not in the wrong place. The first one is 360 White Plains Road. The second one is 249 Main Street and 27 New. The third is 122 Montgomery. Fourth is 64 Hickory Hill. Let's see, Sal's Market is next, followed by 210 Hillside Place. The next is 2 Cross Hill Road, followed by 57 Locusts, followed by Summit Street subdivision, and then 15 Hunter, 8 Wildwood, and 34 Water. So, we're going to be here a while, but I would like to keep it going. So if everyone comes up, if they would keep their presentations concise, I don't mean to rush you, but you know, towards the end, we all sort of drift. So if you could just keep your presentations concise, we'll keep our comments concise. If the public has comments also, please make them succinct. I'm not trying to stifle you, but if you have comments, please make them quick. And if their comments have been brought up by someone else, could you maybe think of not saying them again? That would help us move along. I appreciate that. Let's see, we could take a break somewhere in the middle if you'd like. I don't know when. And if it seems like we're rushing, it's probably because we're just trying to run through the minutes. So, that being said, those are the rules. Let's get started. The first application is 360 White Plains Road.
Louis Campana, Architect, 7th Pondfield Road, Bronxville, New York. There we go. So just a very, very brief, and I know we're kind of rushing through, recap of the last meeting. We went through modification of the plans and reduced the scale and orientation of the building to, with the intention of reducing the number of variances required. We were able to do that, and now we have one variance that is required, and that's for a pre-existing legally non-conforming condition, which is the proximity of the parking lot to the easterly property line, which is a residential zone. One other point I do want to make, this may just be me, but I kind of felt like there may have been a little bit of a misconception regarding the existing curb cuts and onsite circulation. So the existing curb cuts on White Plains Road to the north and south are both existing. One on the south will be used as it is today, which is ingress into the site. The one in the north will only be used for egress, as it also is today. And the one on Cypress, that is ingress and egress. So, since the last meeting and reviewing comments received by KSCG and Colliers Engineering Friday, the 21st, we've further modified the plans based on those comments. I'm not sure, we sent them yesterday, but not sure if anyone has had the time to review, but I'll go through those quickly. So, what we've done here is we've added traffic control devices, in other words signage, to the site. On Cypress, the entrance and exit on Cypress, as you can see here, we are adding a stop stripe and a stop sign, which currently doesn't exist today. Down, oh, I'll continue here. On the left or eastern corner of the back of the new building, we have a do not enter sign because that is a one-way for the loading zone and also for guests to egress back out of the site. On the right corner of the building, we have a one-way sign with a right arrow directing those who are entering the site to go around the existing building. I'm sorry, the proposed building. The arrows that you see here are all existing, for the most part. We are making slight modifications to just further reinforce the traffic flow, and that's with arrows similar to this one here, which indicates that you can go in both directions. We've added striping for the loading zone. The loading zone will be located between the existing and the proposed structures. And on the bottom corner of the proposed building, we will be adding a sign that reads "loading beyond this point only," so that they know that they have to pull all the way forward, so that the customers in spots 85 through 89 can back out comfortably and proceed to exit the site. Down towards White Plains Road, here we have our point of exit. We're adding two do not enter signs, one on either side of the curb cut facing in, so that this way, traffic flow on White Plains Road, either going north or south, can see that they cannot enter into that curb cut. And on the southern side, we have an entry only, again, two signs, one on either side facing inward, so that, again, north and south traffic can see both, or can see one, at least. We made a modification to the parking spaces that would be located in the back of the proposed building towards Cypress, and that's parking spots 75 through 78. There was a recommendation or suggestion from Colliers Engineering stating that it would be more natural for people to pull into the spots in this orientation, because the majority of the people entering the site will be coming from White Plains Road, as opposed to Cypress. So we've done that. We've added an enclosure, a screen enclosure around the refuse area. The screen enclosure at the refuse area is located here, to the northeast corner of the existing building, with bollards at the three corners for protection. We've added a detail of that enclosure on CS3. It's a white vinyl enclosure matching the fence that will be located on top of the retaining wall on the easterly side of the property. In terms of the landscape plan, we have evergreen planting, which will be located at the base of the retaining wall. I believe it's Texas that will be located at the base, and then there will be arborvitae every so often, as you see here, along that as well, to soften the look of that wall and the fence above it. We're also adding a parking peninsula, I guess if you want to call it that, or parking lot peninsula, here, with trees and low shrubs. And the same thing on the northeast corner of the property, another peninsula here at the back corner, along with screening on the north property line. The side of the building facing the residential properties, we're proposing foundation planting along the base of the building as well, again, to help with just not bringing down scale, but just softening the look of the building as it's perceived by the residents behind. We did a traffic study, not, I'm sorry, a parking study, based on the comments from the last hearing. And, I just got this out of the way. We did this in three consecutive days, June 5th through the 7th. Weather was nice, school was in session. We chose based on the peak times, I would think that's the right way to say it, and also the schedule of the karate studio. We did 12:30 PM, 5:30 PM, and 6:30 PM. We found here, and I think this also includes a 10% increase to the actual number, we have on June 5th at 12:30, 41 vehicles parked, June 6th at the same time, 43, and June 7th, 43. At 5:30 PM on June 5th, we had 31 vehicles, June 6th, 28, and June 7th, 21. And at 6:30 PM, we had 30 vehicles on the 5th, on the 6th, we had 19, and again, 19 on the 7th. Now, this part of the study here, this chart shows a full lot, and this is more of a clarification, and this is behind building. The reason why Mr. Mafia didn't separate this out, but it's just indicating how many of those vehicles were actually parked in the area that we are going to be affecting. So that, just a clarification to comments that we received from the engineering consultant. These were all taken by drone at these specific times. This was transferred over to Stephen Mafia, so that he can create the study based off of the footage that we captured. One comment that we did receive from Colliers Engineers was the potential difficulty of, I'll go back to my site plan first, the potential difficulty of parking in spot 85 and 86. As you can see, the radius is quite tight coming around. It would be difficult to park head-on. So, we were asked by the comments received to indicate the track radiuses on the plan, but because it's an existing condition, I felt that it'd be best to demonstrate that in a live event, you know, video, captured on video. So, this is my vehicle. We are currently at the northeast corner of the property, about to make the turn towards 85 and 86. And this here, I believe, is the reversing into the spot. That's the existing turning radius that we are maintaining. You drive past 86, I'm sorry, 85, and you back into it. There is a large vehicle just to the right of my car, was not an obstacle. And then, following that, is a second safe maneuver, which would be a three-point turn, and that's done by pulling in front of a perpendicular to 85 and 86, backing up and then pulling back in. Again, the vehicle is still there. The Subaru that's already parked was there when I had, when I arrived on site. And that's it for the updates on the plan. Greg Cattipoli is here, our civil engineer, to speak about utilities and drainage. Unless, you want?
Yeah, just a quick question. Full lot versus, what's the line that defines the full lot from the, what's the other term you used? The behind building and the full lot? Behind the building?
Right, so the full lot is the entire lot.
Right.
Behind the building is just indicating the number of cars that are behind the existing building where we're proposing to situate the new building.
So, a line contiguous with the back of the building, everything beyond that, east of that?
I didn't hear that, sorry.
I'm sorry. So, everything behind the building, from the building line, if you extend that across, everything back there, east of the building?
Yes.
Got it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
My name is Greg Cattipoli, civil engineer on the project. I did this stormwater and erosion control design. Last submittal, there were some comments from Kellard and Mr. Tramelli, that I was able to have a meeting with him, and we discussed the existing conditions versus what we're looking to propose. And currently on site, there is a storm drain in this vicinity where the mouse is, that has an existing system under the pavement, that we're unaware of exactly what it is right now. So, the plan currently is designed to capture what we're proposing, the proposed building, the rear half of the parking lot, which is the watershed associated with the rear part of the building. And it's also now designed to capture the existing structure, which is believed to be going into this system in the rear currently. So, the new system is now designed for the parking lot in the rear, the existing building, and the proposed building. However, the plan is to look at the system when they're demoing, to see what it's made up of currently, and try and replicate that when they're reconstructing, via inspections or whatever it may be. I added notes on the plan that direct the contractor to do that. Other than that, we were asked to create 10-foot separation between the water and sewer, which we did. I added some details for some components, like the bollards, and updated a trench drain detail, and some other technical matters, but that's the bulk of it.
Great, thank you. We're good. Can we just briefly hear from our consultants? Mr. Greeley, can you just apprise us of any changes, and if you are okay with them?
Good evening. Philip Greeley, Colliers Engineering and Design. We had previously reviewed the traffic and parking information that Mr. Mafia had submitted. We had prepared memos earlier this year, from January 2nd, '24, which was a review of his November '23 study. And then, what was reviewed tonight was in our June 21st memo. And we had reviewed the plans, the parking assessment, and traffic. Based on the responses that were provided to us yesterday, the last changes to the plans were addressed. Mr. Campania has made those adjustments. The added sign-in that we asked for, the shifting of some of the parking spaces, the information relative to current and future parking conditions, those are all addressed. The one, I guess, only comment that we had remaining was on that parking space number 85. The current striping is slightly different than what's shown on the proposed plan, so that turning radius is a little tighter. So, I think space 86 is fine. Space 85 is a little tight, and based on their parking study, I think if we lose one space, it's not going to be the end of the world. And if we keep, similar to what the striping is there today, they were modifying it slightly on the plan compared to what's on the aerial. If we keep as it is today, we may lose one space, but I think it will be more effective in terms of how people will access those spaces. So, at this point, we're satisfied. They addressed all the comments that we had. The submission from yesterday addressed the last few remaining items, and pretty much in good shape.
Great. Thank you.
Joe Tramelli, KSCJ Consulting. We had reviewed two iterations of the plans, first back in March, and then we had issued a memo last week. Since that memo was issued, we had received updated plans yesterday, which were described tonight to you. They've addressed all of our comments. The only, I guess, unknown, which was described already, is the extent of the existing stormwater system, but they have designed a system that would assume that there is nothing there at this point, and it will, I guess, keeping in mind that the building, proposed building is going in the area of a currently paved lot, so there's really no increase in runoff as a result of the building. We did ask them to collect, there's a portion, the, I guess it's the southeast corner of the lot, currently discharges, runs off-site to Cypress. They did collect that, as was asked. They're mitigating that increase in flow, also collecting the proposed building, existing building, and the remainder of the rear portion of the lot. So they've gone above and beyond. I think, as was described, it was our recommendation, as long as the board is amenable to it, I think maybe, you know, the first step in construction is they poke some holes in the ground, and we get a better understanding of what's actually there, just to make sure that, at a minimum, the system they're proposing will replicate what's in the ground. I think what they've done will probably find exceeds what we need, or what's there today. So, we were satisfied.
Is that lot basically completely flat? I mean, I'm...
There's subtle, there's subtle changes in grade. There is a general divide, almost in the central portion of the existing building. The front half goes towards 22, and it's existing drainage that ultimately connects to the system in Route 22. And then the rear portion, probably, I would say, 70% of the rear half of the property goes into existing drain outlets, and then into whatever this underground system is. And then there's a small portion in the corner that runs off into Cypress.
Got it.
In the proposed plan, they have a trench drain at the drive that would collect that and keep it on-site.
Good.
Any other questions, guys?
So with that one location, that is a concern, I guess, when they start a test pit or something like that, and then it'll be reconvened to just make sure the plan in place is still adequate.
Yeah, I'm sure if the board is okay with it, we can make it a condition of the resolution that, you know, step one with issuance of a building permit is to have us out there with the applicant and their engineer and just verify those extents.
Yeah, just make sure there are no significant problems, right? Yeah.
That's when, after it comes back here. Right, that condition you just, that condition which you just said will be once we get this application back here. Gotcha. Thank you. We're good. Any other comments, guys?
As tempted as I am to want to see Louis' driving again, this time in slow motion, I'm going to pass on that.
I think this is an open public hearing, so we're going to see if there's any comments from the public first, and then we'll get back to you. This is an open public hearing, so if there's any comments from the public, now's the time to come up. Don't go too far, Joe.
360 White Plains Road, going once, going twice.
Do you, we're basically done. If you have any other thing you wanted to wrap up with?
I have nothing further unless the board has any further questions.
No.
We're good.
I like the drone. Thank you for taking that. It convinces us, and as you said, that was coordinated with the times of the classes.
That's correct.
Great, thank you. Thank you for doing that.
I just have one last question, and that is, Dr. Greeley suggested it probably wouldn't make much of a difference to remove one parking space, and I think he was talking about, but it would make a difference in terms of needing a variance, right?
Well, I mean...
Weren't you like right on the cusp?
I was hoping for one variance, but if we have to get a variance for one spot, I don't think...
Well, I don't think that's a big deal, but it would require a variance just to remove that one spot, right?
It would, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great, so we're going to move forward with this, guys. The plan is to adopt a NECDAC on it, and then move it on to the zoning board and ARB. So unless you guys have any comments about that direction for this application, if that's the case, then I am going to make a motion to adopt a SECRE negative declaration for Application 23-27, 360 White Plains Road.
Second.
Based on the environmental assessment forms, parts 1, 2, and 3. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then I make a motion to refer Application, same application, 23-27, 360 White Plains Road, to Zoning Board of Appeals and ARB, to continue, and to continue publicating to the planning boards, on the planning boards, October 24th, 2024 meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Enjoy the summer.
Have a nice summer.
Two.
Yes, I'm sorry. Go right ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. For the record, David Smith, Principal with Planning and Development Advisors, here on behalf of Angelo Agavino, for the redevelopment of 249 Main Street and 27 New Street. The last time we were before you, I believe, was the April meeting, your April meeting. In the interim, the design team, including Tony Freida, who's our architect, and Michael Mastogia Como, who is not here tonight, he has a family issue, he may show up later, and Mr. Brian Dempsey, who is our traffic engineer, have provided responses to the comments raised by your technical staff and consultants. And I'll have Mr. Freida come up in a couple of minutes to provide his responses. Just to review for you and for the public, the proposed action, as submitted, is a site plan application. There are a number of variances that are being requested for a six-story building located at 247, or 249, 247, and 27 New Street. The proposal calls for 25 units, six-story building, 15 one-bedroom units, and 10 two-bedroom units, all supported by 36 at-grade parking spaces. We have received the comments from your technical staff, and also, we received a comment letter from the Eastchester Fire Department, who's reviewed the application, and they had, their comments particularly were with respect to the building construction, but they were okay with access and circulation as indicated on the site plan. At some point, you know, with the last application, you had indicated the SECRE environmental review, and I think that's kind of where we're at at this point in the application, where we need to have that determination of significance before we go back to the zoning board for the processing of that application, and then ultimately coming back to your board. So if there's any additional information that the board, your board is looking for to make that determination, would be helpful if you could identify that for us specifically, so that we could be as responsive as possible. I'm going to ask Mr. Freida, the architect, to come up and just walk through the site plan and some of the revisions that he made as part of his submission. plan and some of the revisions that he made as part of his submission.
Antonio Freida, architect. So since the last time, we made some clarifications on the number of parking spaces and the, the walkway notation over here regarding what type of material it would be coming in, and also the traffic, one-way traffic, and the, I had placed on these drawings the grade from the very beginning, so I don't know whether that was picked up by examiner, but it was on there. Other than that, I have no other comments at this moment, except one more, one more thing I wanted to say, that they're asked about the clearance underneath the building, and we only have nine feet for any vehicles to go under the building if they need to make the turn from Main Street back into Main Street this way. All right? Otherwise, we do have a passageway from, a driveway, rather, from here all the way around, from the building to the edge of the parking spaces of 12 feet, and that goes all the way around this way and back. So it's okay for smaller vehicles and vans and so forth that are not more than nine feet high, but any, any vehicles with a long wheelbase and higher, taller vehicles, I'd be afraid to make them turn around at that point. You know, they might clip the edge of the building. We also have to provide you with some more information about New Street. I have, I've got to get information from the surveyor on the existing conditions here. Other than that, there's nothing else that I can add to that.
Thank you.
So Mr. Gi, Mastojia Como isn't here yet, but if you would like to have your own consultants or if you have any questions, you or the board?
Sure. I have a question regarding, Noel, I don't know if you can clarify on this. There are two letters, both dated June 19th, both from the fire department, which are inconsistent.
Sure.
Yeah.
So the fire department issued a letter with proposed recommendations. It had recommended removal of two parking spaces, and then I believe the applicant consulted with the fire department, and after that deliberation, the fire department reissued its memorandum and acknowledged that those two spaces can remain. So the controlling letter, even though they're dated the same date, is the one that does not recommend removal of the two spaces.
Okay, so there's one with three recommendations as opposed to four recommendations. The one with the four recommendations was the one that you circulated to the board last Friday. The controlling one, the superseding one, is the one that you sent around earlier this week.
That's correct. And the original was posted to the website last week and then replaced with the replacement letter this week.
Got it. Because that also discusses the type of construction and certain code.
Sure. And those comments didn't change. Those comments are consistent among the two letters.
No, actually, actually, it, one, the first letter says either type, now, I don't know what, Roman numeral 1A and 1B construction is, but the first one says you can use either one, and the second one narrows it down, so...
Okay. Thank you for that.
Okay. That's, I, that was, I think my question on that has been addressed.
Thank you.
Can I speak to my consultants for a minute? Thank you. Mr. Tramelli, could you just join us? I just want to, or maybe you just tell us, are there open items in your list, or maybe you should get up there and ask that?
I'm sure the board saw that, our review. I believe the majority of the comments we had related to the architectural plans were addressed. There's, there still may be some coordination that needs to take place between the architects' plans and the site engineers' plans, but the engineering revisions didn't appear to address many, if any, of our comments from our prior memo. In fact, some of the information came off the plans, probably a mistake, a plotting error maybe, but the stormwater calculations, for instance, aren't shown any longer. So there's, there's quite a bit of information we still need, and I guess, you know, of particular interest to the board with regard to SECRE, we'd like to see the sewer loading calculations, the capacity analysis, and the main and Main Street. We have some questions still that remain on the stormwater design, site lighting, photometric plans, so those items we haven't seen yet, and we still have, we still need responses to those.
If my memory serves me correctly, I think the, the sewer, this happens to be located, I believe, right next to the, is it the, the Village O'Tuckahoe sewer or feeds into that?
Right.
And at least the representations that I recall being made were that that sewer system has very good capacity at this point.
Yeah, I don't expect it to be an issue. It would just be nice to have that.
But it's not, just not there. Okay.
Right. Yeah, and then speaking with your highway department, and, you know, there's been no concerns expressed, but I think we should have the, just the numbers to put in the record.
Sure.
And I know the grades were noted on the architects' plans, but there's no contours or elevations to support that. We had asked for a driveway profile, just, more so to just rule out the need for a variance for the driveway platform. There's a grade change between Main Street and the site. We just want to make sure that that apron specifically complies. Once you're into the site, it's very general, you know, very minimal grading and fairly level throughout the site. And one of the newer comments we had was discussed earlier with regard to the clearance under the building. I would just ask, or I'd be curious to know what would happen if, say, a FedEx or UPS truck, you know, how that delivery would happen on the site, if they'd be required to do a turn, you know, U-turn on-site and pull back out some other, I guess it would be against traffic, because they wouldn't be able to circulate around the rear of the building, it sounds, unless they could show us some turning tracks that prove that they can make that. But it didn't sound like that was a good option, so just a new question that we'd like to see answered.
My, my visit to the site does suggest that it's, that in its as-is condition, it does kind of have a hump on it, you know, where Main Street is lower and New Street is lower, and, and, you know, I assume that would all be leveled out, but...
Yeah, I'm sure they'll, well, they'll have to cut that down.
Yeah.
That goes to our request to have that grading and...
Exactly, because what you, you know, we can all envision how we think it's going to look, but nice to know.
Right.
In writing, yeah.
Great, thank you. No, that's fine. Mr. Greeley, same, same question, just to get it on the record. You may have issued a memo that got past me.
Philip Greeley, again, our latest memo review of the plans and responses we had received from DTS Providence is dated June 21st. The majority of our comments have been addressed. It's noted that they will have to get permits from Westchester County DPW for their driveway openings, county road, and they've had some initial correspondence, but we would like to be kept in form of their progress on that. There's some labels on plans that we have asked for. There's really three items that are, in my mind, have to still be addressed, and maybe I'll just show you on the plan. It's going to be easier to... So the first deals with the turning radius for fire vehicles coming into the property, and there is a fire zone there, but it should be depicted on the plan to make sure that that fire zone extends far enough for that vehicle to make that maneuver when accessing the property. That's number one. Number two is, in this vicinity where the transition from 249 into the 27 New Street lot, the dimension in here seems to tighten up, so we just want a verification, because that could affect this parking space. That's just more of a verification of the actual dimension. And then the last item, right now, there's basically a shared driveway, or it's, it's a continuous driveway for 27 and for 29. One is, I think, brick pavers, and one is asphalt, but vehicles can use the whole area. So it's not clear on the plan what width remains, because the residence at 29, it's a fixed building, if there's any change there, it may preclude them from getting to the back portion of their property. I don't know if there's any easements there, or whether it just kind of functions today. So we need those dimensions verified, and it should be, the location of that home should be, at 29, should be indicated on the plan with dimensions of the remaining driveway width, once all this work is done. So I think those are the three key items that we had left.
Doesn't sound like any of them is very major, is it? And one of them is the Westchester, Westchester County?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just for the record, I confirm my attorney, because I saw, there's no easement as of, as of record, but we're going to have it depicted like he likes on the plan, so, you know, everything should have dimensioned.
If you could just put your name on the record?
I'm sorry. Angelo Agavino.
Great, thank you. Any more comments, guys? Because this is still an open public hearing, but before we go to the public, I know someone brought up in the past about the school district, and the superintendent of schools in Eastchester did write a letter to the planning department, and his, and was asked to determine or let us know if the existing schools can take the, any number of students that would be the result of this application, and I'm just quoting, and I think this is on the website?
Yes, it is.
Right, it is. And he just quickly said, "In my view, the district can accommodate the number of students for the multifamily residence proposal." He estimated 15 to 25 students across K through 12. I'm not taking responsibility for his comment, but that is his comment. So now, we don't have any more questions. This is an open public hearing, so with the, this opportunity for the public to come up and have comments, make comments. So you know, this is for 249 Main Street and 27 New Street. Any comments from the public? Okay.
Let's just say it one more time, this is, because I know we had a very large contingent the last time we were here. It's quite frankly surprising that there's no one here, maybe everyone's at home watching the debate. So last call for, for 249 Main Street and 27 New Street, if any members of the public want to be heard.
Okay. So being that no one's here, it's up to the board to figure out the next steps, and I do appreciate the amount of work that has gone to this and the revisions you made to accommodate all the comments about the civil and parking and traffic. The one issue that has always been a concern, a personal concern, is the massing of the building and how it, how it reflects on the rest of the neighborhood. So I have to read into record, I have a statement as the chairman, that I would like to read into the record about my opinion about that matter. It's something we haven't really discussed, but it's a critical issue, and I figure, rather than continue and tell you later how I, as the chairman, feel about this application, now's the time to note it. So again, guys, I don't know if you've read it, or you probably haven't heard it, so I'm going to run through it, and then you can tell me your opinion about what it is I'm about to state. So it is regarding, this is my SECRE statement. At this point in the review process, we're considering applications' potential to have a significant negative environmental impacts as required to do as the lead engineer's under SECRE. That's what we're doing. The environment under SECRE is a broad concept. It includes air, land, and water, as you might know. It also includes patterns of population concentration, distribution or growth, and existing community or neighborhood character, among other things. Whether there be a change in the visual or architectural character of the streetscape, and whether the project will introduce a different sized structure than currently exists, the impacts of those changes, and whether the project is changing the nature intensity of the housing from one type to another are considerations this board makes. Here, the structure will change the streetscape. The proposed structure will significantly exceed the permitted height limitations according to the zoning law, in addition to needing a variety of other variances. It also appears to be significantly taller than the surrounding buildings. Before we can continue with the SECRE review, the board would like more information about how the building will look in context with the surrounding buildings, because it does have a significant, because it has concerns about whether the proposed building will be consistent with the surrounding neighborhood. The applicant has submitted a 3D rendering of the building and the height, but those submissions do not show the building in the context of surrounding neighborhood. I think that the, for the next planning board review, we would like to see, see exhibits that provide a representation of how the building will look in context with surrounding buildings and the existing streetscape. In addition, the engineer's comments, which he put forth, which we'd like to be addressed for this review. So those are, that's my opinion. If there's members of the board that would like to further that or make further comments, now's the opportunity. We haven't discussed this.
I just add that, that the height of the building, and I visited the site, and in particular, I realized there's a fairly tall building to the right of what would be the front of the site, at 9 New Street, which at various points is a four-story building or almost a six-story building, depending, again, it has that hump. It has a much more significant slope up and back down, which, which is all the more reason why I would agree with the chairman, that I, I'd like to see exactly how this proposed building would compare to that on a streetscape, on a 3D, you know, and, and really, let us dig our teeth into it, and, you know, because that is, you know, I know that there are other concerns here about the potential overcrowding of, you know, I know we're cramming a lot of parking spaces in, and we're talking about this nine-foot overhang, and whether that's going to be big enough for certain deliveries, but ultimately, we're talking about introducing 25 units into a pretty tight area and building up at a scale that may be out of character for, for that neighborhood, or maybe not, but I, I'm not convinced yet one way or the other. And in that regard, I absolutely have the chairman's back on this.
We're not going to vote whether you concur with us, but if you have comments to the contrary, now's the time.
No, nothing to the contrary. I concur with your statements, and as a resident and someone who is, you know, looking to stay in the community long-term, I feel like the, the nature and the look of the building creates a precedent to allow other buildings of that type, and, and, you know, I like, I like the way Eastchester looks. I want to preserve the look. I don't, I don't care for it to start becoming along the likes of New Rochelle or White Plains, because if we're going 70 feet and, you know, it opens a doorway to continue doing that, so I concur with your statements, and, you know, I'm looking out for, for my, my personal interests and other people in the community who share these sentiments that, that haven't come here to speak publicly. And I'm just concerned about the precedent sets for the future of the, the landscape of Eastchester.
So... Yeah, and if I could just add, you, you guys know this, because with the four-story that we originally approved, that was, I think, that wasn't easy. And, and we did approve it, and, and I... And we did approve it, and I understand the finances behind this, and I get it, I get it while you're back before us. But, and I'm not, I'm not saying I'm prepared to shut this down by any means, but we just, that is the big concern here, and we want to make sure we're fully informed on it.
I can get that prepared for you.
Yeah, I mean, what it is, is we need to see what it looks like in context of what's around, which isn't to say anything other than we need to see it, and then reexamine the statement and see if it changed the statement in any way. I mean, if you want to go down that path, you certainly can, and come back with what we've requested.
All right, so you're looking for a graphic that has, we had provided elevations of the building, but you're looking for more of a stepping back a little bit and seeing how the building fits into the streetscape.
Yes, absolutely.
I mean, if you read this through, you'll kind of understand what it is we're looking for. We want to be convinced that this is in character with everything else in the area, so whatever you need to bring us to try and explain that to us, please, too.
Yeah, quite frankly, most of us are seeing, would be seeing the building from Route 22. Or coming by it on Main Street, but, you know, coming by it on Main Street, I think we have those dimensions, but I certainly am interested in seeing what it looks like, you know, how it makes that portion of the neighborhood look. Because, you know, that's the whole concept of the massing. If you're right there, it's, you know... I think you understand what I mean.
Absolutely. 3D render, something like a 3D rendering, or just?
The more information you can give us, the better. How about that? Is there any, Mr. Chairman, anything in particular you want to see?
So, on another application that we thought was too big, we floated balloons, just to see the massing on top of what's there, and sort of gives you a visual representation.
I was just gonna say, I recall that application, and I think because the massing was such an issue with that other application, there were a number of 3D renderings, moving 3D renderings of it, computerized, and also, the board wanted the ability to see it with the balloons, and so that the public could see the massing of it that way. I think both were done, by my recollection of that particular application.
Yeah. Have you ever done that? I mean, we put balloons up there.
To figure it out.
I remember, we did it, it got too cold, and it started sinking fast, it was in the winter. But, it allows you to see on-site what the mass of the building looked like. I don't know of any other thing, rendering certainly would help, but there's nothing like actually being out there and looking at it, and trying to visualize it based on what's there.
Being able to see it from different angles, yeah.
It appears to me that, and again, it's totally up to the applicant what they want to come in with, but you are also looking at it not only for the building itself and its massing, but in the context of what's next to it, on that block, and so on, so...
Interesting idea.
Which is why getting different vantage points helps.
So, if you want to consider that, if you think it would be helpful, you certainly can. We can free up a weekend morning and do it when we're all available. If you want to put them up, we'll come and certainly we'll all come out and take a look.
For a balloon test.
For what?
With a balloon test.
Balloon test, yes.
Yeah, I think so. I mean, am I misspeaking?
Yeah, I think, I think when we've done this before, we, like, we set aside a couple hours on, you know, maybe 10 to, 10 o'clock AM to noon, or something like that on a Saturday.
It's up to your choice.
Mm-hmm.
No problem with that.
Okay, that's about where we stand right now. Thank you for, thanks for all the work this morning. I'm sorry?
Okay. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
Great, thanks.
Nice evening.
Have a great Fourth of July.
Have a terrific summer.
And enjoy your summer.
You too, have a nice summer.
Thank you very much.
The next application is 122 Montgomery Avenue, 23-39.
Only have 10 more applications to go.
And we're on a roll. It's 8 o'clock, we got two down. At that rate, we'll be done by 8:00 in the morning.
I'll come out this way. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Leonard Brandis, Brandis Architects, Two Spencer Place, Scarsdale, New York. I'm here representing 122 Montgomery Road. We went before the zoning board back in March 12th, and received variance, area variance for the rear yard. And then, we came to your board in April, I think it was the 25th of April, where you sent us to the Architecture Review Board. That was on June 6th, where we got approval for the Architecture Review Board, and came back to here. The change that we made is basically in the fencing. We originally had fencing across the front of the, front of the building itself, which would have required another variance, but we decided to take that away and just do fencing along the sides of the buildings. We're just trying to keep neighborhood kids, or anybody else, from getting to the back property areas. So, we now have fencing along the back areas, as you can see in the rendering that we have submitted to you. Other than that, the building has stayed the same, from what we had given, what we had presented before. So, we're looking at, once again, it's a basically one-and-a-half-story structure, which is going to be housing private equipment and machinery in there. It's not going to get a lot of traffic, it's mostly going to be entered in the mornings, and then at the end of the day, to bring equipment in or out, and the trucks or equipment in or out of that. We're not, it's not a delivery area, where we're going to be receiving a lot of packages, we're just creating a small building next to the existing building. I know you've been here, been a long night, so I'm trying to keep it as brief as possible.
Oh, yeah, cool, then I'll answer really quickly. So, last time you were here, I think we were talking about a big gate across the front that was closer to the street, because we were concerned about people messing up.
Well, we wanted to protect the vehicles, but we decided, well, there's not going to be vehicles there overnight, anyway, so we're talking about during the daytime. So, the only vehicles will be parked in the front, the building during the daytime. This is not a parking lot, the side of the building does have parking for the adjacent building, which is part of our property. The owners are the same owners now, so before they were leasing that property on the side, if we go back to a site plan, a regular site plan?
That's fine. So, instead...
The parking on the side there. I'll go back to the next drawing, if we can blow that up a little. And, let's go to the new, so you can see where the, where it says asphalt paved parking on the side of the building, that's actually being used by the adjacent property, and has been since that other building has been up. So, we're gonna maintain that, it's part of the same property now, same owners of the building.
So, you're still putting fencing, it's just back by the building.
Right, there is existing fencing, and we're just showing the fencing along the back, which is existing as well. Any new fencing is going to be the black vinyl fencing to match for a better look.
You now just have it set back on either side, so it's closing off from beyond the side, the building line.
Yes, it's just closing off the property, we still have our plantings at the front, so that we do have some decoration in there.
And you have a sort of a narrow lawn on either side?
Yes.
Okay. It's very vibrant green in your rendering.
It's a black chain link?
A black chain link fence, yes.
Okay, nothing green. Okay, I'm good.
The least visible.
Okay. Let me see, I think this is a open public hearing. So, any comments on this application from the public, 122 Montgomery Avenue? No, good. So, I'm, hmm, what do I do, I close the public hearing? So, I make a motion to...
Sorry to interrupt, but just, this is an unlisted action under SECRE, and this was the subject of an uncoordinated review, so the zoning board made its own secret determination, and now you have to make a secret determination before you can decide the application. So, in the materials, the applicant submitted a Part 1 EAF, and we have proposed Parts 2 and 3, and that can, you know, you can review those as the basis for your negative declaration.
But, we can close the public hearing, right?
I think we have to do this first.
Should we do that first?
The negative should come first, and then see if there are any other public comments, and then go ahead and close and decide.
That makes sense.
So, I make a motion to adopt a secret negative declaration for application 23-39, 122 Montgomery Avenue, based on the environmental assessment forms, Part Form, Parts 1, 2, and 3.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we ask if there's comments from the public on this application. Since there's none, I make a motion to close the public hearing on this application, 122 Montgomery Avenue.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have any conditions or anything?
Yeah, there was just one condition recommended by the Architectural Review Board, was that it seemed like the location of the fencing was inconsistent between the Architectural Plan Set and the Engineering Plan Set. I think the Engineering Plan Set just needs to be updated, so just to update that Plan Set before a building permit is issued.
That's an easy one, so, subject to that condition...
In compliance with the plan submitted.
Yeah, I'm just reading if there's anything else here. Okay. So, I make a motion, subject to the condition that was just stated, I make a motion to approve this application for 122 Montgomery Avenue.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good summer.
You're welcome, have a nice evening. Next application, 64 Hickory Hill.
It's application 24-17.
Good evening, good evening, Chairman, board members, and town staff. My name is Joe Fernandez, I'm the architect for the project. We were before you last month, and then went on to the ARB, to bring them some finishes and samples. We were basically brought back to you folks with some stipulations as to some detailing of the vertical trex boards, which we mentioned to them that we were going to mitre and face drill and plug, so there'd be no apparent seams on the side elevations. And we also were asked to specifically denote our finishes on the drawings, which we did and updated, and you should have all those. And lastly, we were asked to bring a colored rendering, which you should also have in your package, and is depicted here.
Sorry, we got distracted. Finishes, right, shown here.
Now we see them.
Finishes are within the package, on the drawings, and the rendering was the last item they had requested. And we were here originally because of the 30% rule. We changed the front from a siding to stucco, and we added a front porch to the entrance, which is all without need of a variance.
Variances from the rear yard setback requirements were granted by the Zoning Board of Appeals on June 12th. If you remember from last month's meeting, there was a bump out in the back and a new deck, and both of those required rear yard variances, which were granted.
That's right. That was, this was the application that the neighbor came by, and we defined it clearly for him, I think?
Correct.
Yes.
That was with the overhang, and then you got, that was the overhang that was getting adjusted, right?
A little bit bigger. I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
This was for the back area where you had an overhang that was being adjusted to be an extension?
The backyard was, there was an extension in the backyard, yeah, for a family room. And, and there was a two-foot extension into the rear yard setback for the deck.
Right.
Because we wanted to get an eight-foot deck for a table.
Got it, thank you.
Okay. Between you and me, I like it.
I love it.
I think it looks handsome, you know, I don't know if I should say that very loudly, but it looks pretty good. Maybe it... So, then, any other comments from us, guys?
So, I guess key elements ever changed, you went to the stucco version versus what we saw last month, right?
Right, so, it wasn't a change in anything, it's just really more information and depiction. We brought in samples, but the folks were looking for a rendering, and I didn't bring a rendering, so we did the hurry up to get the rendering in front of you folks to make the final decision.
Got it, okay.
I happened to miss the last meeting, but was the, were there any color changes? Was it white previously, where the garage is?
Yeah, so it was white and black. And I had brought the Stowe samples with me, but they were just, you know, eight-by-eight pieces.
This is an open public hearing, so, one second. If there's any comments from the public regarding this application, 64 Hickory Hill, please come forward. If not, then I make a motion to close the public hearing on this application, 24-17, 64 Hickory Hill Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And, as expected, I make a motion to approve this application, 64 Hickory Hill, 24-17, as shown.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Have a nice summer. Next application? It's you? Okay, I'll forget who you are in a second. This is Sal Spitzaria, application 23, 2315, 751 White Plains Road.
Hello, and good evening, I'm Peter Gato, the architect, and here, first time in front of your board. We were previously in front of the zoning board and the ARB, and received approvals from each. And I have to apologize, but I think the drawing you have in front of you, the site plan, was not the latest and greatest, with some notes as prescribed and agreed to by us from the ARB. What you have in front of you is the, is an updated version. I have love, small copies I could pass out to the board, if you would like to look at them now, or I can submit them later on. I could walk you through the changes, what's happening. So, essentially, the different, the agreed-to items from the ARB, or the updates from them, was the, was, well, I'll give you an overview of the project first, just so you understand what's happening. It's an existing market, it's been there for, I don't know, 25 years. I think you, it's a busy frontage, due to the fact that it's a little undisciplined with the way it's constructed now, with the flat sidewalk, and essentially, one entire driveway running in front of the building. We are, we are building a small addition in the back to increase the interior space for walk-in cooler, and offices above. With that, we are also resurfacing the entire parking lot. We are resurfacing and repairing and resurfacing and repainting the entire building, all four sides. We are repairing any damaged parapets and such on all four sides. We are cleaning up the site and removing all extraneous wires and satellite dish that's no longer used. Any equipment that's up there, we're gonna take off and obviously discard, and clean up as best we can for, not that you could see it from the front, but for the sides, and for anybody in the rear, should they have a concern. On one side of the lot is a little, a couple stores, the other side is the existing gas station. The entrances are not, the building itself is not being changed, the windows are, remain the same, door remains the same. And the other substantive change, it's sort of in two parts, was, is involving the parking and the clarity to enter and exit the site. The parking from, the way we divided up in terms of space allocation, is the rear, the back, back of the building would be for the staff and for the owner. And to which we have, we have accepted a black chain link fence gate on the right side that's sort of blocking people from entering, with proper signage that says for staff and owner only. So, the public and the customer is only going to come in and park in the front, as they do now. So, there should be no confusion as to go into the right, up to the site, the parking would be in the front. We have properly assigned the spaces, properly dimensioned them, and what we've done is include a low landscape buffer centered around an existing pole, which is not the owner's, to sort of create a low-lying shrubbery, less than three feet tall, which is agreed to be maintained by the owner, with proper landscaping, and allow for an ingress on the north side of the... and allow for an ingress on the north side of the corner and egress only on the south side, if I get that correct, of the site. So therefore, a path of travel is safer, pulling in is safer, pulling off the street is safer, that no one's going to back into a pedestrians walking on the sidewalk. There's not that many pedestrians anyway, but whoever may be walking there, there's no chance to hit, interact with them. There's a clarity for getting off the property in terms of queuing up and waiting to properly exit. There's signage on the inside just saying what's one-way. Signage on the exterior coming onto White Plains Road as well. And the two, we had some suggestions before for landscaping, and then we ended with a couple of choices, and we thank Noel for sending us choices. So we selected the inkberry plant to be a landscape element. And this was also recommended as some best plans for urban environments by both Cornell University and New York Botanical Gardens for their glossy green foliage. It's good for shade and for sun. It's salt tolerant for when we do, respond to the sidewalks. It responds well to shearing and trimming. It's good for a little low hedge, and it's hardy in the winter, and it's native to the northeast. We did also receive a letter from Colliers. And just to kind of set the tone, it's a pretty imperfect site, and it's been working for a long time. And from the reviews of the past boards, and I hope this board agrees too, that the updates we've done in terms of striping, landscaping, queuing of the ingress, egress off the site is going to dramatically improve the safety and security of the cars and the pedestrians alike. To that effect, we are not doing any work on the road itself. We're staying all within our property, so we're not doing any work on the sidewalk other than to repair the curbs that are not quite damaged there. But the road itself, as you know, is a state road, and anything involved with the state road is a very, very lengthy, long involved process, as we all know. So to get involved with the state is, I'll see you in three years. With that, we know it's an imperfect site. We're trying to do the best we can with the building and clean it up and really enhance what's happened, what's there now. And with the resources we have, we're prepared to do that. I'm not going to go into everything today. I'll certainly ask questions the board has, but just in terms of some highlight things from the Colliers letter, they asked about accidents. According to my client, in 20 years, there's been really no accidents there. And just for the record, I called and tracked down Lieutenant Graff from Eastchester PD, who is responsible for the record-keeping, and I haven't heard back from her yet, but my owner said there's been nothing for a long time. Again, the path of travel is clear for both the staff and residents with signage. There's a future parking question. There's no future parking because there's no room to park anywhere else. And we think this is a really good solution. We're not involved with any pedestrian activity, that's what we know. And then there's a curb question, which we're addressing again with the proper curb delineation according to local standards and best practices and DOT standards for the ramps on and off the property. So that's our thinking for today. And also lighting, there's a lighting question. I have a cut, I have some documents for that, if you'd like to talk about that. But essentially, they are hardwired, motion-sensitive lights. Their purpose is shining down and just in the occasional to coming out of the back doors, you need it by building code, and the side in the low-wintertime to park. There's enough ambient light in the front, but there are a couple of lights, existing lights. And the only lights we're proposing in the back with the new addition are just the motion-sensitive downward-facing lights. So no light pollution is expected.
Great, thank you. Thank you for the quick review. Is that, is the memo, your memo about this? Can you, I heard him, what he said. Thank you.
Philip Greeley, our memo is dated June 21st. I think in general terms, you know, what the applicant is trying to do has some merit. The biggest concern is the ability, right now, that frontage is basically just an open curb cut. So getting in and out of those spaces, you have a lot of area to work in. I think the concept of a one-way circulation pattern makes sense. However, the positioning of the building relative to the state right-of-way, relative to where those spaces are, and the location of the existing signal pole for the Wilmot Road signal is right there. So in order to get that circulation in the front, that drive aisle doesn't appear to be adequate. Our recommendation is to have the applicant have a traffic engineer or a site engineer look at the circulation, see if those spaces can be angled somewhat in order to allow that one-way circulation pattern to occur. The accident history, I think, is important to be able to see. If there are no accidents, fine, but I think it's important. It is a state highway, the state, you know, any work that's going to be done there, the state is going to be involved. Even if it's on your property, if you're changing the pattern, state DOT, and I understand the timeframe of getting responses from them. However, because of the location relative to the signal, the proximity to the gas station driveway, I think there should be some input obtained from the state. But most importantly is where those spaces are. Once you put that landscape buffer in there and you try to define a one-way pattern, there's not adequate width for especially a larger passenger car to get out of the spaces and maneuver. I think the concept is great, but unfortunately, the distance between the building and the street line may preclude that. So we need to really see that and make sure that that will function properly. I think the concept is great, but again, the available width to work with may preclude that from functioning.
When you talk about a width, I mean, there's sort of a standard accepted width of a parking space, but you're talking about a width as I understand it. Yeah, okay.
Backout aisle, so, you know.
And it has to do with turning radius?
Correct.
Yeah.
So like, for example, if you have 60-degree parking, angled parking, typically you want to have a drive aisle of at least 14 feet, so those vehicles can back out. Right now, these are perpendicular spaces, and they're using the area that's the sidewalk also to maneuver today.
Yes.
So once you start confining that, it's going to be very difficult, I believe, you know. We're working off of the planned dimensions, but I think if it gets laid out, there may be a way of changing the angle of those spaces and getting it to function, but it has to be, you know, looked at in more detail. And we had comments about, you know, existing parking utilization. That was really to see what is generated there today, because right now, you know, if everything's going to exit at the signal, basically, it's not signal-controlled, but it would line up pretty much with Wilmot on the exit, which is a better condition, but we want to see what the movements are that are there. So I think the key things are looking at that front circulation area, getting the accidents just so that we make sure that we're not making a condition that's there worse or maybe it'll improve it. And then I think some input from DOT would be useful in this particular case.
So obviously, what's there now is less than perfect.
Correct.
But the concern that I'm hearing from you is that by adding that buffer of planting, that we may be creating a different problem.
Correct.
And conceivably there-
Because of the distance that's involved there.
Correct. And conceiv-, is there conceivably a way to angle the parking that would not require quite as much space and still preserve the number of-
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And that's what you're asking the applicant to take a look at, to get a traffic engineer to
Yes.
Take a closer look at this.
Correct.
Could it, could you put, sorry. Would it be possible to use the alleyways on either side of the building for parking? And then maybe loop around as a one-way exit?
Yeah, so on the north side of the building, and I understand what the applicant is trying to keep that reserved, you know, for their own use, on the north side of the building, the width is adequate. Because of the positioning of the building on the lot and the adjacent property, on the south side of the building, at the street line, you have width. But in the rear, it's a pinch point, and I don't think there's enough width to get a vehicle through there. So in an ideal situation, that would be the way to really create a one-way circulation pattern, but I don't think there's enough room between the existing building on this property and the building to the south to make that.
And it can spill out onto the, the street behind it, Resigliano Way, or?
Yeah, well, we had a comment about looking at possibility of a cross-axis easement. I don't know if that's possible, but
Thank you.
In the rear, there is the access, there's a parking lot, I believe, that's in the rear, that maybe a connection could be made. And that was one of our comments, to at least explore it. I don't know if it's possible, but, thank you.
On top of all that, there's also, I'm sure, a requirement for the number of spots as well. So it's not like you could, nor that they want to remove any, but it's tight. As nice as it is to, it's honestly a little confusing to get in and out of there right now because you don't really know, other than the light pole, you don't want to hit the light pole, obviously, but the concept is a lot better, it's just a little tricky. Got it, okay.
Yeah, I think what we were asking for in terms of documenting existing utilization, you know, traffic movements in and out and number of parking spaces occupied, because you have the use. It's not like we have to just look at the code only. We know what's happening there today. And the area of the office and the cooler isn't going to really change the operation, I don't believe, so. But again, it's a tight location.
Thanks.
So do you foresee that there is something, some improvement that could be made here if it's looked at more closely?
It would have to be looked at more, but I think if the spaces could be made on an angle, then there may be enough room. It's going to be tight, it has to be laid out. I mean, then that one-way circulation could function. And maybe the applicant could document the distance between the buildings. I don't believe there's enough room to circulate around the south side of the building.
It doesn't look like it. Yeah, okay. Thank you. Thank you for your recommendation.
So I'll just, you hit the nail right in the head, that it's a, it's a kind of a, I think I said in the zoning board, it's kind of a Wild, Wild West setup to get in and out of there in the zoning board. And the chairman, you know, the zoning board had lots of compliments on what this was done. And this is really an opportunity to fix something that's been wrong for a long time, not just architecturally, not just planning-wise. It'd be beautiful town, Eastchester. The building next door just did a renovation. This is a chance to do all of that. And one of which the main things is this situation. Just mathematically speaking, yes, we did have to get a, we would have to get a variance for reduced number of spaces, which we didn't achieve. There's not enough room to look around the building. We tried all these exercises before. We tried to park in the back, we tried to park on the side, we tried our circulation on the front. None of it worked. If you angle the spaces, as Mr. Greeley is suggesting, what happens is they get so angled, and the angle becomes so severe, you actually lose space. So instead of having the number of spaces there, which work, you have more angle for a couple more feet of room, and you lose two or three spaces. Then are people going to idle, they're going to sit, they're going to double park? I don't know what people are going to do. Humans are interesting creatures. So this is the optimal, we push everything to the left, as you can see from the diagram, to the corner. We actually widen that road as best we can. And then we have a 78-foot, 78-degree angle for parking. And with that, and there's categories of angles for parking and requirement setback. So because it's a one-way, we, the range is roughly around 18, 20 feet. We have 17 foot to the front of the planter. So if the planter becomes less, or you don't like a planter, you want to put a little fence there or something else, some other physical deterrent from the front, you gain a few more feet. That's really the benefit of what I see. But the way it is right now, and I'm on the territor planning board, we see this all the time, and the clarity is really a citizen's safety concern. And when you do things like this, or set up very clear in-out with cars, it makes it a lot better for the community. So we have 17 feet, and that's plenty. All you do is back up and continue in one direction. 12 foot is needed for a regular driveway. Parking space is nine foot wide, so 17 foot wide is pretty enough to get it through. So that's how we came up, all these mathematical studies and all these plantings board, we did circulation studies several, several, several times. And again, from between zoning board, asked us to do these exercises, which we did. And then coupled with the facade beautification, articulated with the front, little landscape to help further define cars. I'm not going to hop a curb, it was a low curb, people still might want to hop over it. Further, when you have some deterrent in the front, you're not going to get people shooting across New Wilmot, streaming up the street, just finding a space to go. So traffic patterns, it should be calm and clear once it's established. So that's my response to his response, just to help you.
Yeah, it's a real dilemma. You want to make it better, but as you do that, it just gets worse. You said you asked previously to look at something?
Say it again?
You asked previously, you asked previously to look at something here?
No, no, no. In the beginning, we had a couple of different parking situations, so we explored, I think Mr. Newsom asked about, or driving around the perimeter of the site, and it didn't fit.
Didn't work, okay.
Yeah.
But it, I hear some of the numbers thrown around, you said 17 feet should be enough or something. It sounds like Dr. Greeley is suggesting that may not be enough. Yet.
Well, there's no, there's codes and there's industry standards, and there's different guidances for different items. For example, a compact car is much different than a, you know.
This is Eastchester, nobody has a compact car.
Yeah, yeah, so there's plenty of room for that. But there's a general safety parameter of backup. It was too tight, you know, I wouldn't try to shoehorn it. But 17 feet with a regular car is enough to kind of swing back out of there. You start to angle it, and you go slow, and you come out. So that's what the, so there's different categories with angles. So the other option, you severely angle everything, then it makes the entrance very awkward to come in, and you got to turn this super-sharp angle just to get back out the same way. So there's a ratio and balance of entering and exiting just to claim that space there.
I mean, I'm wondering, as much as I like the idea of the plantings, which, you know, give it a lot more aesthetic appeal, maybe there could be some, in lieu of that, some sort of low-lying, I don't know, some sort of bump or, you know, maybe a curb that's raised very clearly marked. It'd have to be, you know, in some bright color, but, you know, that would be, would form a barrier to cars just coming in, but, you know, would allow cars backing up to go over it because it wouldn't be so high that it wouldn't. And that would probably get you significantly more backup space.
Right now, it's two feet, two feet from the front property line to the edge of the Belgian block, so it's two feet of width. If that were to reduce an any portion, you pick up, you know, at most two feet to the property line, but then you subtract a fence or curb or some dimension of that nature, so probably a foot you'd gain if it was reduced. In order for the plants to survive, you need a certain wet bed width to kind of get it.
What is the width right now for the plantings, the shrubs?
It's between 18 inches and two feet that you need. So if you have 18 inches plus the thickness of something to hold on this side, with something to hold on this side, the interior dimension is 18.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know if that's enough, but to Phil's point- Yeah, I don't know, I don't know if that's enough, but to Phil's point, even if you have just striping on the ground and get rid of the plants, you can get that extra twelve inches, it's built better than it is now, even if there's just a curb or some type of a wheel stop or something. But just to think outside the box to have a little bit more of that space, maybe even to mock it up and do a mock test, like we just saw for another application, just to have a visual.
If I'm hearing you correctly, you are, that planting bed is right up against the property line, right?
Because we, we're trying to claim as much space as we can for this exact reason.
Correct, correct, so, so you don't, even if you put a curb there, you would only gain, you know, six to twelve inches if you put a one-foot curb.
Yeah, right, depends what it is. If it's a, if it's a, something visible, higher bump, anything, it has, needs some dimension to be stable, and that's probably about a foot, then you pick up another foot. So the, so the most you gain another foot from seventeen to eighteen.
But if it's, if it's low enough that you could put a car over it, you know, like, because you can go in theory all the way back to the wheels.
Like, I don't want to design this, guys.
Yeah, I, I understand, but the, what I'm hearing from Dr. Greeley is that, you know, as much as you're arguing for the seventeen foot to be enough, because not every car is a, an Escalade, there are Escalades as well, and there are other big cars. And if Dr. Greeley is telling us this is a concern, it's a concern. And, and I, certainly I, I have a strong preference to have some, some sort of planting there, which I think is a great idea. But if, if it means that we only have the, an unacceptably small backup area, and I agree with you, the more you angle, you're, you're going to lose spaces, and that may not be acceptable. So this is the dilemma. And, and it, as the chairman said, it's not our job to design this for you. But when, when, when Dr. Greeley tells us this is a problem, our, our ears perk up.
Yeah.
I kind of have to defer to our consultant. If he says, we need someone else to look at that before we continue, that's probably what we're going to say. I mean, you've done this, but what I've heard from Dr. Greeley is, there may be other options that can make this.
I, I, I stand before you saying there are, are no real options. I lose spaces, or I don't put the fence, I would keep it the way it is. I mean, really, it's, 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 it's a problem, you're going to, it's, we're trying, we're really, it's an opportunity to improve what's there. Or do something that, to help the whole building, all this mess. The gentleman sitting over there complains about this incessantly. I, I can't go back to my client and say, we're going to hire a retrofit engineer to do all this work, all this time, talk to DOT, come back in six months to have something similar, have four spaces. I'm not sure that's better. I'm not sure it's better for business, I'm not sure it's better for the project. If he moves out tomorrow, someone else inherits the building. I honestly don't think that's a better solution.
I, I probably.
I know you listen to your consultants, but I just, you have to balance the, the safety, what's there.
Do you understand returning tracks?
Yeah.
That you demonstrate how vehicles can get in and out, so that's not here?
Yeah. Okay, got it. So, I, I mean, it's hard for us to sit here and evaluate what you're saying, and I appreciate your opinion that it might be futile. But we do have a recommendation from the consultant that works for us. And I think we'd be remiss not to listen to the consultant that works with us.
I appreciate that, but I'm really, I'm really sure a direction we could take in reference to this, the, the, some of the specific comments here. I, I, I don't know. I mean, I, I can do a video like the person before me, and show you if this marked out and backed up, and if I hit the cones or something. But in terms of traffic and all, and the, this is, to me, a little extensive to what's been asked for this, this tiny little project here.
Yeah, I don't think we have the expertise to respond to your, your design.
Say that again, sorry.
I said, I don't think we have the expertise to respond intelligently to what you put forth here. There's too many, there's too many pieces to the puzzle that I don't think we're going to sit here and ask about dimensions and how wide it should be, and that's a design thing. And we're not here to, to either approve your design. Your concept, we understand, but I don't think we're here to say how much backup space you have, and if you're making it better or worse or other. That's why we have a consultant.
Yeah, and, and there are other options. I, I, I described something to you, and I, believe me, I know nothing about traffic. But if you put a, a low curb, it would presumably serve as a barrier. But you could also back up over it. But right now, with this, with the plantings, the back of your car is going to hit the plantings. So you have no, so you're not only gaining six inches by, by shrinking it back, but presumably, and, and maybe this, you don't get credit for this with the traffic engineers, I don't know. But in theory, at least, you might have, you might gain not just that six inches, but maybe another foot or so. And that may be all you need. I don't know the answer to that.
No, it's, it's an excellent idea, and I, I would, I would happily agree to that right this second on behalf of my client. But as a practical matter, I'm, I'm not sure it works. If the ARB asked for this planter, and then we talked all about it, and there was plantings, and there was other subsequent information, and all of a sudden you say, you know what? Makes sense to discover a nice barrier.
But you said you were on a planning board yourself.
Yeah.
So you understand how this works?
No, no, ARB is, is after our board. ARB is always last. And most tech communities, ARBs last for that reason. So, I mean, I'll do, I, 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 planning board to me should govern, believe me. So it's a technical, legal, okay.
Yeah, just a reminder.
You know, you're digging your heels in, but the board has told you what their concerns are.
I got it.
So, at, at some point in time, you have to make a decision with your client as to how you want to proceed.
And just a procedural point, our architectural review board is an advisory board to the planning board, so it doesn't issue approvals, it only issues recommendations. So it's the resolution of this board that ultimately controls.
Perfect, thank you. That's, that's just what I wanted to hear. Okay, I'll see what I can do, and I will, anything specific, but I'll respond to these letters and take your advisement. Thank you for the comments, very, we had a good information, so.
Don't leave, because we have to have a public hearing, so there may be some comments made that you can hear. So, let's just do a public hearing, and then we'll come back to you.
Sure.
Thank you. Any other comments, guys?
No.
Good. So, what are we doing? I'm making a motion to open the public hearing on this application. Twenty-three fifteen Sal's Market and Pizzeria, seven-five-one White Plains Road.
Second.
On your favor?
Aye.
I know Mr. Pulaski is here, anyone else? Great.
Good evening. I'm Bob Pulaski, I'm an Eastchester resident, living at ninety-seven Maple Street, which is behind this project. I am also the author of a document that's, that's now in the public record. Everybody could see that I addressed a number of, of issues relative to this, to this project. And I think maybe as a consequence of that, or just maybe as a part of just good planning department, you, you now have Collier's Statement, which was one of the initial impetuses to writing that letter. I had listened to the zoning board, and the zoning board called the project, the, the parking and, and entry and exit, the Wild Wild West. And I just took that as, as an emotional description, because I've driven in there myself. And I suggest everybody on the board try to drive in there yourselves, and you'll immediately connect with what the zoning board said. Now, with due respect to, to what the architect is saying here, the zoning board did predicate their suggestions that the planning board looks at things of, of, of different detail. And so the zoning board says, well, we'll do the best we can. We know that this is, this Wild Wild West, we'll try to control it a little bit better. And so they added the strip, and you, you now have a flow, an exit and an entrance. And that's good. And they, they said, okay, now we've made an improvement to the project. We understand that there's still these huge variances, like thirty-five percent or forty percent and such. But we've made an improvement, it's, it's an existing non-conformity. But they did say that ultimately you guys are going to look at other aspects of it, and they deferred to the planning board. In between, of course, there was the architectural review board. I think you're, you're faced with a conundrum. It's, it's, it's a problem location. And it's a problem location that existed, that we all just let it exist. But now because of an application, it's before you. And you can't ignore, we can't ignore as a town, we can't ignore the reality of the site. The site has problems. Whether this project goes ahead or doesn't go ahead, it's now in front of the town that this project, this place has, has problems. I know when I visited the, the, the site one, a couple of mornings, to, to pick up a, a coffee early in the morning, it was dark out and whatever, it, it was very difficult to back up and figure out where the sidewalk was, and how to get out of the, the site with, and that was the morning. The, the, there was very light traffic, there were no other cars to deal with. I was the only car in the parking area. And I, I'm also a person that focuses on a lot, maybe from my civil engineering background, about parking, parking spaces, making sure we don't make them smaller and smaller, and the aisles shorter and shorter. You, cars now are like fifty thousand, sixty thousand, seventy thousand dollars, and, and you, you get a little dent on a, on an EV, and, and if it affects the chassis, you almost have to throw the car away. So it's important that, when you have cars, that you be comfortable, that you can back up, that you don't have to be so crunched in, that you got to worry about hitting this wall or this fence line. So, I understand what the, what, what, what the architect is saying, that he's, he's, he's constrained. I, I absolutely agree with him. But you on the board are representatives of the public. And, and if there are an accident, whether it's a car-to-car accident, because one touches the other in the, in the backup mode, or nothing happens, and somebody crosses the sidewalk and hits a pedestrian, it's, it's something to, to keep your eyes open, and make sure you look at all of the facts in making your decision. And, and now, on, 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 on another matter, there was a discussion about angled parking, increasing the angle. It's already angled, but increasing the angle. Now, if you increase that angle, you, you have ten foot right now on the east side. And that ten foot is what allows cars to get around to the back of the building. And there is some parking in the back of the building for, for, for the employees. If you make that a greater angle, you're going to reduce that ten foot. So you're playing with, with a ten-foot number. Now, one of the significances of, of that is that right now, the plan shows on the south side, two containers, rubbish containers. Existing right now, those containers are on the, on the north side. On the south side, those containers are faced the wrong way. The trucks come with their forks, they pick this up, they flip it over and back. So when you have two containers faced this way, then that truck has to come up, the guy's got to get out, he's got to turn that container around, then pick it up, put it down, and then he's got a container beyond it. So my guess is that those containers will really shift. On the final project, when it's all built, those containers will shift back to where they presently are on the north side. Which means that you want to preserve the ten-foot width that you right, have right now. And if you increase that angle and reduce that ten-foot width down to an eight-foot or, or a seven-foot, that's going to make it very hard for that truck to get in there and pick up the garbage. It's, it's, it seems like a minor point when you look at the plans, but it's going to be a major headache to, to the owner of this, this place. Shifting, shifting subjects. I also talked in my, my letter about, about the roof. And things evolve. When that building was built, everything was low. Now you're getting taller and taller buildings. The building I'm in has three levels to it. So from many, two of my levels, I look down on a roof. Part of planning, when you're doing a tall, tall buildings, is, and there's mechanical equipment, you start to put materials around that equipment, so that you don't see the, the equipment. That's from the street, when you're looking up. I'm up high, looking down. What could we do about things like this? Some of the things we could do is, we could possibly put a silver coating on a black roof. Makes it a lot more presentable when it's bright than just a black tar roof. Another is that there are going to be some changes that are going to happen. As a consequence of, of this addition, it's refrigeration. So there's some changes to the mechanical equipment on the roof. I'd like to know what those changes are, and that any piece of equipment that doesn't need to be up there gets eliminated. I don't know why it would stay up there, except that, no, it could just be there, nobody's complaining. But if this, if you require the applicant to include a roof plan showing the pieces of equipment, what has to remain and what has to be there, then when the project comes to being reviewed for its update on, on its certificate of occupancy, that item can be checked. Has it been taken care of, has it not been taken care of? And that's, that's my two cents.
Didn't you have another comment about the building in the back with the striping and?
What's that?
Didn't you have another comment about the building in the back and the striping, and it was somewhat?
Yes, I, I had several comments, some, some of them have been taken care of already by the, by the architect. The, they, at the architectural review board, the siding was, was, was changed, such that all of the sides of the building are going to look, look the same, that was good. The architectural review board talked about a flat, to take an angular roof and flatten it, they, they did that too. The lighting, he's, he's commented on, on the lighting. I don't think the lighting is as much of an issue as I, as the lighting next door, which I will address through the building department with a complaint letter eventually. But that, that next door has a far wider parking, and it has to project light further into, a further distance. This project will be, be closer. But I also wanted to mention it simply because I've been on the planning board, I know what you guys go through, and looking at lighting, that it doesn't shine into other properties.
So your main comment is, clean up the roof, get rid of, make it more presentable. That's right. I said, your main comment is, can you clean up the roof and make it more presentable?
And the parking.
Yes, I, I think, I think just, just putting a, a spray on, on the roof.
Okay.
I mean, it's good for preserving the roofing, because it reflects some of the heat.
Understood.
It's something that's becoming very commonplace, you, you see it all around. But I also mentioned it from, from a planning standpoint, that I, I know it's not on a code. I don't know what, whether architects are starting to adhere to it, but things have changed. You're, you're up high, and you're looking down, and so a roof that you normally don't see, now you see it. And I, I think that it should be looked at from a public viewpoint, that, that it should look nice and neat.
Okay.
There's a, there's, there's an antenna up on the roof, a disc antenna. One of the comments came back that they no longer need that antenna. So I presume that that'll be removed. But there's nothing on plan that says that it's going to be removed.
Okay. Thank you.
That issue did come up at the architectural review board, and there is a note on, I believe, sheet oh-one-oh. I don't know, Peter, if you can, no, that says the unused wires and equipment will be, well, their, uh, equipment is going to be added.
That is true, that is true, yes.
So there is that note, yeah.
Yes, but, but I, I use that as, as an example of something that I brought up, and, and consequently, it got addressed. So there might be other pieces of equipment up there of, of a similar nature.
Great, thank you, good seeing you. Good seeing you. Any other comments from the public? Okay, public hearing stays open. Right, so back to you. I mean, if you could, just look through his comments and see if there's anything else you could pick up to sort of clean it up. I think that is the intent also. I mean, the main concern is the Wild West comment, right? It's just a, I don't go there, 'cause I don't even know where to pull in. It's just so confusing, you have to leave from there. So maybe I'm just, but, um, it would be nice if we could clean it up. We don't want to deter you. We, you know, we wanna support you, but we also are somewhat obligated to look at this from a engineering point of view, that we...
Understood. Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll look at it, yeah.
Thank you.
To his one point about the trash, is that what's on the left side of the structure?
Yes. And so we are, he's right, we are trying to maintain the, the road, the accessway as wide as we can. We actually shifted the striping a little bit to make it a little bit wider, just for that exact reason, just to access and it's just, you know, when you go in the back, you got, you need a little more maneuvering room to get around there so that we maintain that aisle as wide as we can. And we're limited by the building corner and the property line that's there too.
Yeah, just to show that for next time, just to explain that.
Great, thank you. So the public hearing is going to remain open and our next meeting is the, in September, whenever, if you wanna come back. Our next meeting is...
September 26th. The 26th of September.
September 26th.
September?
Yeah, there's no, we don't meet in July and August.
Oh, really? That's why everybody said have a good summer.
That's why we have 12 applications today.
Oh, okay.
We just made your day, didn't we?
Yeah.
I'll see you in September.
Okay, thank you. You'll get through this. The next application is, um, next application is, uh, is 2338-210 Hillside Place.
My name is Greg Ketchupoli, engineer on the project at 210 Hillside Place. We have been before the zoning board for some existing non-conformities that we got approved for, for the variances. We've been before the ARB and gotten approvals, and now I stand before you. We are, the existing building is, currently has, is a flat roof. It has two garage doors. Here's a picture of it, an elevation of it. We are renovating the roof of the structure to create a proposed hip roof and add an overhang to the front because the owner currently uses it for storage of equipment and sometimes does minor repairs to his equipment. So he wants, excuse me.
Good night, have a nice summer.
Sorry about that. So he wants a space to work dry in front of the doors. The colors of the building are gonna remain the same. The roof will become asphalt hip roof. There's no net, there's no increase in impervious surface. The impervious surfaces remain the same. And overall, it's aesthetic and structural improvement. And that's...
What was the variance from, that you asked for?
Uh, it was a side yard setback. I'm sorry. Rear yard setback, side yard setback, and then there was a parking variance.
I don't have anything. So let me just see if there's anyone from the public. So I make a motion to open the public hearing on 2338-210 Hillside Place.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
All right, hold on, hold on.
Oh, sorry.
No comments? Good. Make a motion to close the public hearing on this application, 2338-210 Hillside.
Second.
And I'm okay, thank you for coming in, and I make a motion to...
We, we, we're all in favor. We have to vote on it. Did we vote on it? I seconded it.
Oh, on, on the, close the public hearing?
To close.
The close of the public hearing. It was seconded, but we didn't...
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Don't go. Hold on. It's getting late.
It's only 9:05, Jim, we've got another two and a half hours.
Right, so then I make a motion to approve this application, 210 Hillside Place.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good. Thank you. We're just warming up. Next. 2330, huh, 2333, 2 Cross Hill Road.
That last one was a good pace.
There's nothing really to discuss. You know...
These, these minor changes are better.
It looks so good as you were carrying it up. I don't think you need to say very much.
Good evening, board. Adama Yarano from Community Designs and Engineering. On behalf of the applicant, Mr. and Ms. Martin, we are proposing a new single-family dwelling at 2 Cross Hill Road. This project was before the zoning board for a number of variances listed in the application. It has been approved. And basically what we are proposing is a new residence on an oversized lot. It's in the R6 zoning district, but it's a, just about a 12,000 square foot lot. So the proposed home as situated on the site plan will basically take on the same driveway, similar idea, location on the left-hand side to serve a two-car garage. And the proposed residence would basically just have a wraparound porch on the right side, and it's a corner lot. It's located Cross Hill Road and Oakland Avenue. Basically for the overall site, we are removing the existing house and all of the related features. We did perform onsite deep tests and percolation tests that our town consulting engineer came to witness. And basically, all of the new impervious area, we will, we'll be capturing onsite with stormwater mitigation. And other than that, then landscaping, there is a new landscape plan by Bob Tramontano that basically explains what the new landscaping is and some of the existing evergreens on the side yards that we're trying to remain. Also on the right-of-way, there's some existing evergreens that will remain and trees as well. As far as the elevations, so basically materials throughout, you know, your typical white hardy plank siding, AZAC trim, asphalt shingle roof in a charcoal color, standing seam metal roof in the front and the covered porch, stone, stone, real stone veneer on the porch and water table in the garage, black Anderson windows and a covered, you know, back patio roof that's just a flat roof in the, in the rear, just to keep the overall massing and aesthetics of the building to a, as minimal as possible. And just a rendering of what the proposed residence will look like.
Looks good to me.
Looks really nice. So just based on prior reviews, it looks like it was larger and then you already shrunk it a little bit? Or am I looking at the wrong thing?
I think...
The gross, the gross for all area?
You went before the, the, the zoning board. And, and they did not approve the, the size and so you...
And then we came back and reduced...
You right-sized it.
Exactly.
This is already now reduced and approved by them.
This is, yes, the final, last zoning board approval of, you know, really the change was the back area and overall massing was the same, but we, again, when you add a front porch and certain gables, it does bring the overall massing of the home down, but that was more of a zoning back and forth sort of workout plan.
Do, do you have, I, I'm looking at it on my Google Maps right now, but do you have a picture of the, the previous, yeah, the existing?
Well, yeah, these, well, maybe at a place, but yeah, this is the existing home. Obviously, this is the whole site. So again, our home will take on a little bit more of that yard on the right side. We did a whole study of also others' size homes in the area too. And then, yes, we have comments from the town engineer we received last week and easily can work with them, pretty basic, you know, details and other things to...
Do we need to ask you to come up or...
We'll order, we'll, we'll, very little comment, private, private details.
Okay, I'm good.
And the landscaping plan, the ARB was good with it?
Yeah, they had no comments with regards to the house or, yes, the landscaping as well. Too many pages, but this was the, yeah, landscape plan, as I mentioned, just new shrubs around the home and some of them in the exterior. There is a PVC fence that will be in the rear yard and then a four-foot-high fence that comes up the side, which actually was one of the comments that we did sort of do some, some additional drawing, which will work out with them. That shows exactly, you know, where it is highlighted in certain color, you know, four-foot here that returns into the back of the house.
Okay. And the, I mean, it, just a point of interest to me is that there aren't any, like, really big trees on the property to begin with. I, I always hate to see big trees come down prematurely, but this looks like it really doesn't have too much there to begin with and you're going to presumably be putting in some thoughtful plantings. And on the whole, it just is a terrific-looking application, I think.
Exactly, yeah. So, yeah, there's like one or two small, I think, six-inch caliber, you know, eight-inch caliber, you know, two trees here that have to be removed, but most of the perimeter, as you see, like, these large evergreens are actually in the right-of-way. That will remain, and also some larger trees right along the property line that will remain as well.
Okay, good. I have, I have no further questions.
Great, so I make a motion to open the public hearing on this application, 2333-2CrossHillRoad.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to close the public hearing, 2333-2CrossHillRoad.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good job, as usual. It's what we expect.
Thank you.
So, subject to, I think we have two conditions that any comments brought up by KSCJ are addressed, and also landscaping. We used to have a comment about landscaping, that there's some sort of certification that landscaping is...
It's a standard condition...
Come again?
Yeah. That the, that the project is according to the landscape plan, has to be signed by the landscape architect.
Yes. That's what it was.
The, landscape architect submits a letter at the end of the project stating that the landscape was done according to plan, or if there's any changes, they have to note that.
Right, so you know what we're talking about. So, subject to those conditions, I make a motion to approve the, to approve application 2333-2CrossHillRoad.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. You coming back for more or you're done?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Well, no, no good summer for you yet then, my friend.
Are you up next? The next is 57 Locust. Is that you?
So, good evening again, Adama Yarano, Community Designs and Engineering. We are proposing a addition and alterations to 57 Locust Avenue. This also did receive zoning variance with very minimal side yard variances. One side is like four inches too short, the other side is like five inches too short. Basically what they're doing is taking the roof off of the existing house. It's a cape right now and they just wanna make more bedrooms and, you know, a nicer planned layout for the second floor. So that being said, if we go to the elevations, essentially, yeah, it turns in from this existing, you know, front facade to a, you know, larger gabled front elevation, all new finishes throughout the home, so there'll be black finish, Anderson windows, white vinyl siding. All of the trim and soffits will be white AZAC and asphalt shingle roof. As far as overall site improvements, there's really not much, anything changing to the site, 'cause they're going up over the existing footprint, other than adding a small little, well, there's a front sort of area over, when you enter, you enter to the side, so there'll be a column there and a little front porch off of the master that one serves a little, you know, sort of balcony for the master, but a covered area to access the front of the house. Existing condensers for this project, they're on the side. They'll probably have to add an additional unit to do the upstairs, the new second floor.
Do you have a rendering of the final, or that was what we were just looking at? The little one above?
Uh, and here, the elevation?
Yeah, it's the upper right.
Yes, yeah, yeah. That's the proposed front, this is just the, the existing, yeah.
Okay, I'm good. Thank you.
And is it, what, what color?
It's white. It's another, you know, still, the white and black is still white, I guess.
That's the Yarano brand, right?
Really, the applicant, I mean, I don't really have much...
It's white to begin with, right?
It is white to begin, yeah. It's white stucco, but they're basically going over, well, it's actually a, a block house, one of the few that we've seen in town that's all cinder block, so they'll have to do, do, you know, sort of a condition on the out, over the block and then adhere the vinyl to, you know, nailers on the outside. And then the new addition is wood framing, so they'll do the framing as you basically do to wood framing.
Okay, that's good. If there's no more, more comments from us, don't go far. I make a motion to open the public hearing on this application, 2411-57 Locust.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And make a mo, another motion to close the public hearing on this application, 2411-57Locust.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No conditions, so then let's approve this application. So I make a motion to approve this application, 2411-57 Locust.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next application is 27 Summit.
So you're done now, Adamo, or, okay. Have a good, good summer. Whoa, you, you have another one, okay.
Good evening, board, again. Adama Yarano from Community Designs and Engineering. For this project, we are proposing a two-lot subdivision at 27 Summit Street. Basically, there's an existing residence on the right side of the property. It's a R5 zoning district, so it requires a 5,000 square foot lot. The existing property is 10,000 square foot, so we're dividing it down the middle. The existing garage and driveway will be removed and there will be a new driveway to access, one, the zoning requirements for two parking spaces for the existing house that will remain. There'll be stormwater mitigation for the newly proposed driveway for the existing residence, and then the new dwelling will be 100% zoning compliant. And we did do onsite tests, deep hole tests and percolation tests that the, our town consulting engineer had come out to witness. We did receive, again, comments that we could work with the town engineer for stormwater mitigation. Basically, what we did just shows that maxing out the impervious, if they were to, 2,500 square feet, we would be able to capture that area completely on our site with stormwater mitigation. And then last but not least, the existing home will need a zoning variance for, with respect to the right side yard, required is nine, we're eight feet, so it'll need a one-foot variance. That's about it.
You said one foot, right?
It'll need, the existing home will need a one-foot variance that we realize on the right side of the, the existing home, that will remain.
Got it. It's pretty straightforward. I'm okay with it. Let's see if the public has any comments. So this is Summit. So I make a motion to open the public hearing on 2424-27 Summit subdivision.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, hi, I am Hani Murphy. I live at 78 Stebbins, so I am behind the house. If you're looking at the house, I'm on the left. My concern is Bronxville Manor. I'm sure you've heard, we've had many people come up here about the water issues in Bronxville Manor. Now we're taking away more land and building another house, so getting rid of more drainage, which is a huge issue in our neighborhood, low water table. You've heard enough, or you've heard this before. One of our neighbors, Ray Bordwell, is an architect, and so he wrote it more eloquently than I could say it, so I just wanna read what he said. He said, just to reiterate, the neighborhood concerned that development like this confirms... He said, "Just to reiterate, the neighborhood concerned that development like this confirms with property line setbacks, height limits, and take any mitigation strategies necessary to make sure the construction does not add to the already insufficient stormwater system in that neighborhood. Flooding has steadily been increasing over the past 15 years, which can be attributed to increased development, like putting two houses where there was one before, causing additional stormwater runoff. We are requesting a stormwater detention system be part of the approval to ensure the neighbors, the additional runoff caused by this will not exasperate the problem. Code minimums are not a solution, they are just that minimums. Things change and we have no way of knowing if the code requirements for stormwater management have kept pace with the development of the last 15 years. We want assurance of a solution, not the meeting of potential outdated code."
Okay, thank you. Yes, we're aware of the water situation in Bronxville Manor.
Yes. The Crawford Street study, we're aware of that, too.
Hi, my name is Joe Mackus. My side yard, it is, I'm 79 Rose Avenue. My side yard would be the backside of their property line. On the existing house, there's a, either an oak tree or a maple tree. And the drip line of.
A pine tree.
Yeah, well, so the drip line from that tree reaches over onto the second property where the existing garage is. So, my feeling is, once they build the second house, they're going to disturb that, they're going to tear up the root system of that tree and it's going to weaken that tree. And we've been having latent bad storms within the number of past years. That tree's going to come down. So, I'm curious what's going to happen to that tree, you know, once they disturb the root system for that tree. That tree's going to come down and that tree would easily hit my house or your house, you know. So, it's something you guys could be concerned about is, once, once you split that property, you allow the builder to build on that thing, the root system and that tree, you know, it's going to come down.
Okay, thank you for pointing that out.
But, but it's my understanding that there's no, this is an application for a subdivision.
I understand.
Before, before any, before anything would be built, it would have to go through the, a separate application.
But, once you split that thing, the second, the second lot, you're not going to be concerned about that, the other lot with the existing tree is with the existing houses.
But what we're doing now, what we're doing.
The trees aren't the first house with the existing house. You're going to split the lot and then, you know, that, that new lot has nothing to do with that tree. Well, they're going to rip up the roots of that tree when they build that house. It's going to affect that house, that, that tree on that house.
Yes, I understand your concern.
Well, you just can't say, well, it's, we're splitting it. You have to figure out what, what, what are they going to do with that tree? You splitting that, that lot affects that tree.
No, that's not correct. Splitting the lot splits the lot. A proposal for construction on the second lot.
So, you're going to go back to them and tell them about that tree?
When you spoke, nobody interrupted you. Let me finish what I was saying, okay? This is an application to subdivide the lots.
I understand.
You are saying that if they build on that second lot, it's going to disrupt the root system of the tree. And what I'm saying to you is, there is no application before this board to build on that second lot. This is an application to subdivide the lots.
I understand that.
Well, Matt, we, if you want to speak, you're welcome to speak, but you have to come up to the microphone.
So.
So, what we're saying.
So, my question is, so you're saying that when they come back, you know, for a permit to build on that, that new, on that lot, they're going to, you're going to concern, you go make comments about that tree on the first lot?
The tree, the comments about the tree will be made when an application developed that lot appears before the board, not now. Certainly, we understand your concern and we're not going to ignore it, but it's not something addressed now. Now is just a legal discussion of, we want to split the lot and it has to be made based on what's here. And that's what's, just can be subdivided that lot. I can't say no because there's a tree.
You said, I can come back, you know, if they come up before the board and I can complain about the tree on this other lot which they know are own.
Well, hopefully we remember and I was going to ask you, by the way, the applicant, where are the trees? I just didn't really know. I mean, but it's, it's a concern, but I don't think this is the right meeting to discuss it.
Try to be quick, yeah, because I don't want to take up too much time. But I will certainly work with the neighbors to look at that stuff and the owner. It's a very large tree in, in the rear of the existing home, which is, well, you could barely see, it's, well, there's one existing, there's a tree here that will be removed for the subdivision that you can see right there. And then there's another tree behind the existing residence that's, I would say, a lot more dangerous. We'll look at the canopy and see if it affects, because the, the proposed home will have to be a certain amount of feet away from the property. So, if that affects that tree that's remaining, we'll make sure that the canopy doesn't go past where the excavation is going to take place. But that existing tree is more dangerous to the existing home that essentially, you know, has to be looked at because it's a problem for the existing home.
The last rip of their head in my house.
Sure, yeah, so it's more the existing home that's remaining, it's dangerous to that home. So, I could talk to the owner, talk to the neighbor and make sure they resolve what's going on with the trees exactly.
So, I think what we're saying is, this will be addressed, it's just not now. We're not just going to, thank you. Any other comments on the application? That was harder than the first one. Okay, so I make a motion to close the public hearing on.
No, we have to refer this to the zoning board for the review of the variance. We have to refer this to the zoning board for review of the variance. The variance has to be granted, so we don't want to close the public hearing yet, we want to have the variance.
Sorry, you're right, this is subdivision, right, so I do what you wrote here.
Just one other procedural point, because subdivisions are an unlisted action under SECRE. Because of the nature of this application, probably an uncoordinated review where there's no designation of lead agency and circulation, rather each agency conducts SECRE separately is more appropriate for this type of application. So, you'll just want to declare it an unlisted action and an uncoordinated review. Then the zoning board will take a SECRE action and you'll take a SECRE action.
Thank you. So, then, we're done with public comment, the, the stays open, the public hearing stays open. And I make a motion to classify this application, 2424 27 Summit Street subdivision as an unlisted action under SECRE and to elect to perform an uncoordinated review.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for your time and enjoy the summer.
Now you're going, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Have a nice summer.
Yes.
The next application is 2409 15 Hunter. Joe, have a nice summer.
Good seeing you, nice to meet you.
Fourth of July is just a week from today.
Good evening, my name is John Yanisito, I'm an architect and I'm representing Mr. and Mrs. Gogliamela, the owners of the subject property. We are proposing an addition and alterations to the existing single-family residence located at 15 Hunter Drive. The proposed scope of work will include the construction of a second-story addition over the existing first-floor footprint, which is highlighted in yellow on the site plan. And we're also proposing a new covered front porch, which is highlighted in red on the, on the site plan. This application was presented to the zoning board and an area variance for the total impervious surface coverage was granted on May 14th, 2024. Come over to the plans. So, here we have the proposed front side elevation. So, on the, on the front elevation, we have the, the proposed second-story addition, which is here with the, with the double gable to match the existing double gable on the left side and the new front entry portico and covered porch. And then here is a rendering of the front facade showing the finished materials. So, the proposed wall finishes will be hardy shakes to match existing in a khaki brown finish. The, and also stone veneer under the porch to match the existing stone on the left side. The roof shingles over the main portion of the house will be asphalt shingles to match existing. And then over the front porch will be a standing seam metal in a bronze finish. The windows will be vinyl clad in a white finish to match existing. The trim boards and columns will be painted AZAC in a white finish to match existing. The gutters and leaders will be white aluminum to match existing. And then there's a balcony at the, at the rear, which will have a railing, which will be a black wrought iron to match an existing railing on an existing front, back porch. The application was presented to the Architectural View Board on June 6th, 2024. And they had one recommendation to show the proposed light fixtures on the elevations. So, we added the, the one fixture at the portico here. And then in the rear, we added light fixtures up at the, at the balcony. And all the light fixtures, the new light fixtures will match the existing, which are at these two doors on the first floor and the lower floor.
It looks like the, the, the home had a fairly recent renovation, is that?
Yeah, all the, the siding was done a few years ago, not too long ago, and the roof was put on a few years ago, but didn't have any substantial additions.
Correct, yeah.
They did do a pool in the backyard and that's one of the reasons we needed the impervious surface coverage variance because of the pool patio.
Got it, okay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Let's do the public hearing, we're still on Hunter, right? So, I make a motion to open the public hearing on application 2409 15 Hunter Drive.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to close the public hearing on the same application, 2409 15 Hunter Drive.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I make a motion to approve this application, 15 Hunter Drive.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you.
All right.
Oh, okay, you're Wildwood. Okay, the next application is 24-20 8 Wildwood Road.
Okay, good evening again, my name is John Yanisito, I'm an architect and I'm representing Mr. and Mrs. Barone, the owners of the subject property. It's a very similar project to the previous. We are proposing a second-story addition over the existing first-floor footprint on the right side of the house, which is highlighted in yellow on the survey. We're also proposing to remove and reconstruct the existing roof on the left side and create a new gable at a higher elevation. And then we're also proposing the construction of a covered porch, which is highlighted in red on the survey. Come over to the elevations. So, here we have, here we have the, the proposed front elevation. So, here is the second-story addition over the existing front, first, first-floor footprint. And then the new front porch, the, the portico exists today, so we're just adding a covered porch here, the portico will remain. And then on the left side, we are reconstructing the, the gable end at a higher elevation so that the ridge line would, would extend straight across. And then at the rear, this is the second-story addition over the first-floor footprint. We set this back a little bit to, just to divide the, the two gables and have a standing seam roof between. And this is the new framed gable on the left side to match the front. And then here is the, the rendering of the front showing the finished materials. So, the wall surfaces here will be a combination of hardy shakes to match existing in a gray finish. And then on the gable ends, the one in the front and the two in the, in the rear, we will have a hardy board and batten also finished in a gray color. The, the front porch, the roof will be a standing seam metal in a black finish. And then the main part of the roof will be asphalt to match existing. The trim boards will be white and the columns white in an AZAC finish painted white to match existing. The windows will be vinyl clad in a white finish to match existing. Gutters will be white to match existing. I think that was it. This was presented to this Architectural View Board on June 6th and it was approved with two recommendations. The first was to show the light fixtures on the elevations and the second was to add some additional landscaping here on the left side. We all thought that it would be nice to have some kind of a taller tree between the windows here and some new landscaping. So, we, I did show it on the survey, the new landscaping. So, we're proposing a couple of hydrangea bushes on either side and a new, what are we calling that? A star mangolia tree in the middle. I spoke to a landscape architect that I typically work for and this, I work with and this is what he recommended would be working here. And then on the light fixtures, the front really has, has a hanging fixture already in the front porch, so we're just going to keep that one. And then there'll be downlights on the rest of the porch. So, we're just adding light fixtures at the rear, at the, the upper balcony. And these light fixtures will match existing at the first-floor doors.
Yeah, those two windows in the lower left-hand, you know.
In the garage?
Yeah, those, those are the garage windows, right? That's, this is the side elevation. So, those, those provide light to the garage, so if you're covering those up a little bit, that's not really.
It's just the garage door windows.
Okay, that's fine.
Just one quick question. The windows and the panes on the windows, they're small. We're not used to seeing that, is there a reason you went in that direction and ARB had no comment about them?
They, they, most, so these are all existing, so we just kind of kept the same pattern everywhere. Yeah, that's why we kept them small. I mean, today, if we would do it all new windows, we probably would make them bigger. Most, most windows have larger divided lights these days.
Okay. Looks good to me. Make a motion to open the public hearing on 2420 8 Wildwood Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close the public hearing on the same application, 2420 8 Wildwood Drive Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And make a motion to approve this application, 2420 8 Wildwood Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Great, thank you and enjoy the summer.
You too, Joe.
Last application is 2425 34 Water Street subdivision.
Good evening, Steve Anderson from Gabriel Senior PC, Land Surveyors and Engineers. I figured we would bring a sketch plan in first to show you what we're going to do. The owner has purchased a lot, that's this lot, on 34 Water Street. And it's a little less than 300 feet long and 60 feet wide. So, as you know, back in 2019, there was a subdivision, which is now one Rugliana Way. And it had quite a few variances because the problem was the zoning, five-foot zone was down in this section and there, there was a 10-foot zone here. So, in order to keep it with the neighborhood, it went through zoning variances. So, they're, they're not quite 10,000 square feet, but they're over a five, five, R5 zone. So, they're over 5,000 square feet. So, what he wants to do is, since this lot fronts on Water Street, which is the R5 zone, keep the first lot compliant with the R5 zone and then add a lot here, which would be hooked into Rugliana Way. Now, currently, this green lot is, is three Rugliana Way. And then the, the corner lot is. is one Rugliana Way. So the original line split it off here, so it kind of gave some land that you really couldn't do anything with. So what we intend to do is, we could, we would need initially a variance, we're still keeping 10,000 square feet on the lot, but we would need a variance for the effective square, because it's required 90, and you can only get 60, because it's a, you know, a 60 foot wide lot. So also, on a cul-de-sac, it should be 100 feet, but it could be brought down to 80, but I figure we would keep it consistent with the rest of the lots on Rugliana Way. And so I put this, it's going to be a lot that looks like this, and it has a 50 foot frontage on the, you know, on the cul-de-sac, and then it would break up this, you know, this no man's land and create a lot there. And, and that's primarily it. Just wondering what your thoughts are on it. I believe our next step would be the actual, do an actual subdivision plan, and then present that, and you would give a referral to zoning. So that's what we wanted to confirm and everything like that.
So you're making four lots?
Uh, yeah, I guess, yeah, make, well, this existing lot, and these are two existing, so it's going to be one extra lot, yes, four lots.
It's currently three would become four.
Yeah, it's currently three. There's a house here, and it goes all the way back, and it butts onto the, the Rugliana subdivision, and then these two lots, the common line is here, and like I said, you got this little strip for each one, so we're just going to split, you know, take out that section and make, you know, get rid of that strip section, so.
How do you access them? They're from the cul-de-sac? How are they accessed? The two are from the cul-de-sac, what's the third one from?
Uh, I'm sorry, what was that, the...
How were they accessed?
Oh, the driveway's right here.
Right, that's one. That's the both of them.
Or it would be in this section here, so.
So three are from the cul-de-sac, and then the fourth one is from the opposite side?
Uh, well, this lot will continue to come out that, this lot go there, and this lot is still, it's still going to be to the original subdivision map, it's going to have driveway here, and this is pretty much the same drive, is the same driveway that was approved for the original subdivision.
I have no comments. It, it looks good to me, yeah.
Okay, so we'll proceed with the project and, and bring it to you, and then we'll get...
I mean, all the details and logistics of this, we deal with later, this is just for us to get our eyes on it.
Yeah, just want to get an idea, though.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful for the next submission to be a little bit more detailed in the variances that were granted, just so that we can evaluate whether variances are needed for the other lots, or whether they continue to conform, it's unclear what those variances were.
During the summer, we'll do the testing on the drainage and everything like that, get it up to par, so.
Right.
Okay?
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Have a nice summer. So, perfect. At 9:45, I make a motion to adjourn June 27, 2024 Planning Board Meeting. The next meeting will be September 26, 2024.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Cool. Good night, everyone.
Good night. Have a good summer.